I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Laurel Island School District Board of Directors to order. I'd like to have silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Kim.
Mrs. Beal? Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Here.
Mr. DiNando?
Here.
Mr. Elias?
Here.
Mr. Kalcik?
Here.
Mr. Lammon?
Here.
Mr. Meadows?
Here.
Mr. Raymond?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for the adoption of the agenda removing P. seven A, P. eight A, and P. fourteen A. On the public agenda, these items were already removed. Motion?
That's for the board agendas because you already had them and they were printed. P. seven A is removed, P. eight A is removed, and P. fourteen A is removed. And we were able to update all the public agendas and the Internet or the webpage agenda prior to getting to you guys.
We have a motion.
I have a motion I need to second.
Our promotion has been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of any Laurel Island stakeholders. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Do we have a mic right over? Just give us your name and your address.
Okay. My name's Alicia Varner. My address is 503 Realty Drive, reside in South Union Township. I'm advocating on behalf of my child, who's a third grader at Hatfield Elementary, teachers, as well as other parents who could not be here tonight because it's also the same time as our meet the teacher. So I'm giving that up for my child, her relatives taking her. I would like to have clarity as to why a third grade classroom was abolished prior to a vote. Now, the issue appeared on tonight's agenda, and it was already done. Define the consistency that was in the agenda for the meeting notes. When Marshall has two classrooms with nineteen apiece, Hutch has three classrooms with eighteen apiece, which is basically the same amount as Hatfield has. Even in the past, we've had three third grade classrooms with smaller sizes, and it was approved up until Monday afternoon when a teacher bit out of that position. So how can we justify consistency when we have one classroom with twenty-eight to twenty-nine and the other one with twenty-six? So the budget for that salary classroom position was already approved prior to this, so I just don't understand that. As well as, how would you feel if this happened to one of your children in third grade, especially when they have to prepare and test for the PSSAs? Would you be held accountable for the consequences of the poor academic performance for the district? And also, I'm not sure if it's part of the PA code or not, that to have more than twenty-five students per one teacher in third grade, as well as thirty square feet per child. Now, I know Hatfield's classrooms are very small. I don't know why Hatfield seems to be picked on more than any other of the elementary schools, and we do pay a very high amount of taxes. Thank you.
First, I'll speak to the point of how it happened as rapidly as it did. To that point, we had openings and biddings due to resignations that didn't come to the district's attention. The teachers, in other words, didn't actually retire until Monday of this week, or last week, or Thursday of last week. We have to go through a process through our collective bargaining agreement that we have to post a position, let people move around in order to bid to where they want to go. With that episode happening, the classroom at Hatfield was left without a teacher. We do have and have had the same amount of students at Clark, third grade, for the last couple of years that have had almost, well, actually, the identical number of students, and they have done very well. You also have two very strong teachers in the third grade at Hatfield that will be able to accommodate those students without any problem. Likewise, there are also other fluidity types of things in regards to some of the students that are in that class that we should be able to manage the class very well. We don't anticipate problems with educating your child and them getting a top-quality education. And the third part of the answer there would be, next year, there is an anticipated issue of furloughs. Don't know whether that will come to fruition or whether it will not, but the last thing I think the board or the administration wants to do is to hire a teacher for one year and then furlough them next year. And we feel like due to the expertise that we have there in that classroom and due to the hand that we were dealt as far as retirements, it was in the best interest of everybody to work the way that we did. But it's not an issue of where we just decided to do this all at once. It had more to do with teachers moving from one classroom within the district to other classrooms in the district. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
And money, that's what it comes down to, over child education.
No, it wouldn't be any more fair to give a third grade teacher to Hatfield and not to Clark, and they've done well.
But also, Hutchinson has the same amount of cover of children in three classrooms.
But there was no movement within their teacher group that...
So my child is penalized because of the movement within the teacher group.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
I said, my child is penalized because there was...
No, your child's not going to be penalized at all. None.
But I'd just like to say, I totally sympathize with where you're at and what parents thought Hatfield were at with the class size. I taught in a classroom, same room for forty-one years, so I'm not aware of the advantages and disadvantages of class size. And twenty-eight would be quite a long step into a high number for a third grade. Myself, hopefully, we can rectify that. I'm not sure if we can this year, but I totally sympathize with you and I have to repeat, twenty-eight people is a lot in a classroom. I've had classes where they could, a lot higher numbers as far as what went on, not a whole lot, but I had one class with forty-four, totally put that in. And twenty-eight kids at third grade is a lot, so I sympathize with you and I have to the parents on that. I wish a little solution, but right now, myself, I charge me to support twenty-eight people in the classroom. I said that. Thank you.
Any other Laurel Island stakeholders? Anybody else who would like to speak? Okay. I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, special meeting of July seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Motion.
Second.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to have a motion for approval of the attendance records of committee meetings and work sessions. Work session of July seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and work session of August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Make a motion.
Second.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Just a reminder that anyone who missed kindergarten registration for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year can still register online as soon as possible. Visit our website at www.lhsd.org and click on kindergarten registration or scan one of the QR codes on the signs that are throughout the community. Thank you so much for registering in advance while now we're on the doorstep of school, and we welcome your child to the LH family. Couple of things, I would like to congratulate first, Ms. Nola Gerard from Hatfield Elementary for a perfect PSSA score on math. I would also like to congratulate Ms. Sylvia Mancini Barclay for another perfect math score on the PSSA from Clark Elementary School. Congratulations to those students. Great job. Also, later in the agenda, there will be a group of teachers that are going to be approved for tenure tonight. If you're here, please stand. Rachel Cece, Lindsay Richter, Shelby Hager, Joy Hurtlin, or Shelby Nudo.
Hi, Ms. Nudo, how are you?
And one of the things that I put out to all teachers who are getting or receiving tenure at a board meeting, I ask two questions. Please describe why you became a teacher, and please elaborate on the most enjoyable aspect of working for the Laurel Island School District. In regards to Ms. Cece, she said, "I became a nurse to help those around me. I have worked in many settings," and she's our school nurse at the high school. "I've always been drawn to caring for children from helping to bring them into the world in labor and delivery to working in pediatrics. Working in the school district has given me the opportunity to continue caring for them. For that, I am grateful." Ms. Richter, the most enjoyable aspects include my relationships with students and their families, and my ability to be innovative in my teaching practice. I love the dedication the district has to the community and their families. And Ms. Hager, it is rewarding to see the growth of my students from the beginning of the year to the end. This is a community effort, and I'm proud to be part of it. From Ms. Hurtlin, and why did you become a teacher? Passion for a lifelong learning. I'm driven by the belief that every child deserves to be met where they are and supported in reaching their next level of growth. And Ms. Nudo, in regards to the favorite part of working Laurel Highlands, my favorite part about working Laurel Highlands is my fellow teachers. We support each other through tough times and celebrate our successes. We are truly a team with one goal in mind, to do the absolute best that we can for our students. So I'd like to congratulate those students as they receive tenure later on this night in our school board meeting. Congratulations. Mr. DeAndrea, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Academic Foundation Report, Mr. Kalcik.
Thank you, Ms. DeAndrea. There is no academic foundation report for this month's meeting.
Thank you. Comprehensive Strategic Plan, Board Policy, and Public Relations Committee, Mr. DiNando.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under CSP one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the district's comprehensive plan as posted on the district's website, www.lhsd.org.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. DiNando. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. C. one is informational, opening activities for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year found in Exhibit A. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Galino and his staff for their hard work we got through the summer. It's the hardest time for custodian, maintenance, building and grounds person. The list is long, and everyone thinks we've got so much time, and the summer just always flies by. Job done to Mr. Galino and your staff. And that concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation of the board's summary report found in Exhibit B.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? We'll call Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Make a motion to approve payment of the bills in Exhibit C.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? We'll call Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve payment of the GOV bills in Exhibit D.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? We'll call Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion carries.
The investment report in Exhibit E is informational. Make a motion to approve the student activity and athletic funds reports in Exhibit F.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the federal report in Exhibit G.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? We'll call Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion carries.
Make a motion for the approval of tan responsible use necessary.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion?
Just to add to that, Supercent Trust is the institution that wants the ability to do the tax anticipation of documentation is in process. We anticipate having the closing of that availability of funds on September third.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Carter. We'll call Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Health, Nutrition, and Foods Committee, Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. FS. one, I'd like to put in the form of a motion the cafeteria report found in Exhibit H.
Show of the blue. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? We'll call Kim.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion carries.
FS. two is informational. The Laurel Highland School District will be participating in the community eligibility program for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. All students will receive a free breakfast and lunch. Adult meals will be four dollars and eighty-five cents for lunch and three dollars for breakfast. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Security, Safety, and Transportation Committee, Mr. Meadows.
Security, Safety, and Transportation, number one, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the approval of the district bus routes for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year found in Exhibit A.
I second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion?
I think there has to be some changes made between the school district and the bus company on different items about the buses that we're going to meet and discuss. I just wanted to let you know that because I'm not voting for the buses.
Would you want a committee meeting for that?
Well, we'll meet with the committee.
Okay. We'll schedule that. Other than that, with the bus routes will be tweaked as the school year starts, depending on the number of children riding the bus, as usual, I would hope. There's been a motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Vote.
We'll call Kim.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
No.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Six aces, one pass, one day.
Motion carries.
Security, Safety, and Transportation, number two, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the approval of the first student bus drivers list and the MNR man drivers list for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year found in Exhibit J.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Security, Safety, and Transportation, number three, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Jo Ellen Johnson as SRO at the high school effective July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to thank Ms. Johnson for her time here with Laurel Highlands. We appreciate what she's done. Thank you.
Security, Safety, and Transportation, number four, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve selection of three security resource officers as follows. Mr. Franklin Piper, assigned to the high school. Ms. Samantha Creighton, assigned to the high school. And Ms. Melissa Vaughn, assigned to Hatfield.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? We'll call Kim.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DiNando?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion carries.
Seven ones.
Seven ones. A pass.
Under Security, Safety, and Transportation, number five, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the retirement of Mr. Richard Barron, Chief of Police. Mr. Barron's last working day will be October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. However, he will be using accumulated allotted days, and his final retirement date will be after exhausting all of these days, and will be determined.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Barron, I appreciate everything you've done for the district throughout the years. You've been here just about as long as I have, and I appreciate your dedication to the district and to the students, to the safety of everybody that either works, comes into the district, or is being educated in the district. Congratulations on your retirement. Enjoy the Outer Banks fishing.
That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Kalcik.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under P. one, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the substitute teachers for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year found in Exhibit K.
Second.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
P. two is informational. Informational. Mr. Michael Fugisado, biology teacher, will be returning to his position at the high school for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. P. three, I'd put in the form of a motion to approve tenure for teachers found in Exhibit L.
Second.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
P. four is informational and approvals. Approve, so under A, approval for the sabbatical leave of professional administrative employee for restoration of health for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
P. four B is, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve sabbatical leave of professional employee B for restoration of health for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
P. four C, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the retirement of Mrs. Kathy Vernon, Andrew Fluberry, Margaret Marshall, Elementary School, September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. Mrs. Vernon has twenty-one plus years of competitive service to the district.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to thank Ms. Vernon for her years of service within Laurel Highlands. I worked with her at Marshall for four years when I was there. I can tell you, you never find, or it'd be hard to find, someone who truly cares about the kids as she does. It's a pleasure having her on my staff, and she's an excellent teacher, excellent librarian. We wish her best in her future endeavors.
Under P. five, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the approval of Jo Ellen Johnson as the temporary interim supervisor of Special Education for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. At a prorated salary of nine thousand dollars for two hundred and thirty day contract, per the memorandum of understanding with LHTA.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion?
This is only for one year.
Yes. Yes, she's filling in for Lori for one year in the agreement.
Sun sets July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. Ceases to exist at that time.
And that will be in the contract.
It is in the contract. Yes. And what I will do is I will make sure that every board member has a copy of that in their Friday focus so you can see exactly what we're agreeing to. But all that stated, and we're on solid ground.
We don't have anyone else to do that decision.
We do not.
We'll call Kim.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Eliass?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
Any passes? Would change your mind? Motion carries.
Under P6, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the approval of Ms. Ryan Rupski as a long-term substitute for Joanna Johnson, new school motion support teacher for the 2025-2026 school year, the terms of the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
He will return back to his position after that year or so.
He's, he's a substitute. He's a long-term substitute right now, so he will just go back into our subpool at that time. He, he's not on staff with the Laurel Highlands School District yet or at, at this time.
And, and they're all aware of that?
Yes, they are. And that's all stated, stated in the MOU that we prepared also. Yep. Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colonsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Eliass?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
Motion carries.
Under P9, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to put permission for the following individuals to be placed on long-term substitute positions indicated and that's found in Exhibit N.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P10, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the substitute employees for support personnel for the 2025-2026 school year found in Exhibit K.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P11, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to authorize the actions of the superintendent through the selection of Mrs. Tracy Corson, Old Elementary Secretary of High Level Elementary School, effective July 28th, 25th, collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colonsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Eliass?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
Motion carries.
Under P12, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to authorize the actions of the superintendent through selection of Mrs. Commander of the Department of Elementary as the payroll coordinator in the administrative office, effective August 6, 25th, 25th, collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colonsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Eliass?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
Motion carries.
Under P13, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for, for the paraprofessional updates for the 2025-2026 school year found in Exhibit A.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P15, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Ken Rockwell, an employee effective July 25th, 2025, collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to thank Mr. Rockwell for his service, excellent employee. It's a shame to lose him. We wish him well. Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea. Thank you, Mr. Colonsick. Athletic and Extracurricular Activities Committee, Mr. Lammon.
Mr. Lammon has asked that I read his Athletic and Extracurricular Activities Committee portion. So, under A, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve, authorize the actions of the superintendent by placing Rick Hill as the head varsity girls' basketball coach for the collective bargaining agreement.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colonsick?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Eliass?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Pass.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
Motion carries.
Under A2, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the financial reports from the booster groups found in Exhibit O.
Second.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under A3, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the ordinance for winter sports found in Exhibit T.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colonsick?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Eliass?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?